Good evening and want to welcome everyone here this evening to the December 3rd Board of County Commissioners meeting. This evening is a little different and special in terms of the board. Usually the manager calls the meeting in order so that we can reorganize the board per general statute the first Monday of December. As well as the special occasion this evening where we'll be swearing in a new commissioner and one existing commissioner. And so before we get to the order of the county's business, the first thing to do this evening is to hold the swearing in ceremony for Mr. Peter Ashudo and Mr. Tony Dennis, which will be done by Judge Lisa Blue Thacker. Tony and Peter want to go down front? Yes ma'am, that's been our, the way we've traditionally done it, so thank you.
I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. So help me God. I state your name. Do further solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof and that I will endeavor to support maintain and defend the Constitution of said state not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God. I state your name. Do further swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of County Commissioner according to the best of my skill and ability according to law that I will not allow my actions as commissioner to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations. So help me God. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will administer justice without favoritism to anyone that I will do equal law and right to all persons that I will not knowingly or willingly take by myself or any other person any fee, gift, or gratitude or reward whatsoever for any matter or thing to be done by me by virtue of my office except for salary and allowances by law provided and that I will well and truly execute faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of Stanley County Commissioners to the best of my skill and ability according to law. So help me God. Congratulations. Congratulations for your death. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. So help me God. I state your name. Do further solemnly and sincerely swear and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof and that I will endeavor to support maintain and defend the Constitution of said state not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States to the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God. I state your name. Do further swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of County Commissioners according to the best of my skill and ability according to law. That I will not allow my actions as commissioner to be influenced by personal or political friendships or obligations. So help me God. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will administer justice without favoritism to anyone that I will do equal law and right to all persons that I will not knowingly or willingly take by myself or any other person any fee gift or reward whatsoever for any matter or thing by me doing or to be doing by virtue of my office except for salary and allowances by law provided and that I will well and truly execute faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of Stanley County Commissioners to the best of my skill and ability according to law. So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you Judge Thacker. The next order of business is to, now that we have a board sworn in, is to actually elect a chairman. And then that, the board, once that is done, will do the vice chairman and other matters of reorganization. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor to nominations for chairman for the calendar year 2013 and the rest of December of this year.
Manager, I nominate Attorney U.J. McIntyre as chairman of the county commissioners.
I second that.
We have a motion for vice chairman, current vice chairman McIntyre, and a second from Commissioner Ashudo. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close the nominations and ask for a vote on this matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, oppose, say no. Motion's approved. Congratulations, Mr. McIntyre, chairman for the reenter of 2012 and calendar year 2013.
Give me a minute. Can you hear me? Forgive me if I look straight ahead and have to turn my seat to see my colleagues because this thing won't allow me to, to turn my head. Our next order of business tonight would be to elect the vice chair. I will note that the chairman preside, is the presiding officer of the Board of Commissioners unless excused by rule of the board. Presiding officer has the duty to vote on any question before the board but does not have the right to break a tie vote in which he participated. In chair, in the chairman's absence, the vice chairman acts as the chairman. At this time, I will open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Josh Morton.
Have a motion by Commissioner Ashudo for Josh Morton, do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second that motion.
Have a second by Mr. Dennis, Commissioner Dennis, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, the ayes have it. Congratulations, Mr. Morton. Our next order of business will be to approve the bonds that are set by the state. The chairman, and I will ask for a motion to approve the following public official bonds. We have a bond for the tax administrator who is Malia Miller in an amount of a hundred thousand dollars, which expires June 30, 2013. We have our finance officer Toby Hinson, one hundred thousand dollar bond, expiring June 30, 2013. Registered deeds Suzanne Lauder, fifty thousand dollar bond, December 1, 2013. Sheriff Rick Burris, five thousand dollar bond, December 4, 2013. Chair, entertain a motion to approve these bonds.
Mr. Chairman?
Chairman Dennis.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the bonds as presented.
Motion by Chairman Dennis, do I have a second? Second with Chairman Commissioner Donovan, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. At this time, we have appointments to our different committees that we serve on. We have talked among ourselves, one-on-one, about what we'd like to do and I think Chairman, excuse me, he's been chairman so long. Commissioner Donovan has a motion to make.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that the following individuals serve in the positions that will be announced. As chairman of the Economic Development Commission, Commissioner Dennis. Donovan as the alternate. Member of the Board of Health, Commissioner Ashudo. Member of Social Services Board, Commissioner McIntyre. Member of the Library Board of Trustees, Commissioner McIntyre. Member of the Airport Authority, Commissioner Dennis, with the alternate being Commissioner Ashudo. Chairman of the Fire District Commission will be Commissioner Dennis. Member of the Abermawr Downtown Development Commission will be Commissioner Ashudo. Member of the Senior Services Board, be Commissioner Morton. Member of the Rural Transportation Planning Organization, Commissioner Donovan, the alternate being Commissioner Ashudo. Member of the Stanley County Water and Sew Authority, Commissioner Morton, alternate Commissioner Donovan. Member of the Central Island Council of Governments, Commissioner Donovan, and the alternate of the Central Island Council of Governments, Commissioner Dennis.
We have the motion, do I have a second? Have a second by Commissioner Dennis, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. Hearing none, the ayes have. Excuse me, our next order of business is to establish meeting dates for the coming year. Since we are a new board, we do have, the last board did assign December 17th of this year as a meeting and I think we should keep that. But we need to vote on that tonight. Monday, January 7th and Tuesday, January 22nd, we meet the first and third Mondays of the month, except for some of the summer months. Monday, February 4th and Monday, February 18th. Monday, February 4th and Monday, March 18th. Monday, April 1st, we're changing to April 2nd. One of our commissioners has something that day that would not be able to meet that night. That will be Tuesday, April 2nd. Monday, April 15th, Monday, May 6th, and Monday, May 20th, Monday, June 3rd. We have here Monday, July 1, I'm recommending Monday, July 8th. We have Monday, August 5th, I'm recommending Monday, August 12th. We have Tuesday, September 3rd because of Labor Day, I am suggesting Monday, September 9th. Monday, October 7th, Monday, October 21st, Monday, November 4th, and Monday, November 18th. And Monday, December 2nd, and Decem, Monday, December 16th. Are there any questions about that, commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Dennis, second by Commissioner Lynn Donovan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. One final item, during any regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, the county commissioners, in order to act in their capacity as board governors for the Greater Baton and Water Sewer District or for the Piney Point Water District, may at their discretion recess a commissioner's regular meeting and reconvene as the board of governors of either of the above two entities in order to conduct business matters related to that entity. It's just a statement I need to make because we do serve as the boards for those two water authorities. We will move now to our regular agenda and the next item would be the devotion, but before I do that, I would like to let you know we'll take a quick five-minute recess. For anyone who came just to see that part, you feel free to leave and if you want to stay and see the whole program, feel free to do that. So I declare five-minute recess. We're now back in session. Before I have the devotion, I would be remiss, and I meant to do this a little earlier, to thank my fellow commissioners for their competence for electing me the chairman for the next year. I just hope I can do you a good job and I want to thank Commissioner Donovan for the good job he has done and the hard work he's done in the past year. Thank you. With that, let's all bow please. Dear Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the opportunities and blessings you have bestowed upon us. And now we just ask that you bless this meeting, that the decisions we make will be to the best interest of the citizens of Stanley County and that we're pleasing to you, these things we ask in Christ's name for your sake. Amen. First, I think we may have some adjustments to the to the agenda, if anyone know of any. If you will note, we do have adjustment for the closed session. We will have a closed session to discuss an economic development matter, to discuss a real estate matter, to discuss a personnel matter. Any other adjustments anyone can think of that needs to be made at this time? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as approved.
Motion to accept.
Have a s- motion by Commissioner Donovan, and second by Commissioner Dennis. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Our first scheduled item tonight is with Pfeiffer University. We have, I'm not sure who all we do have, I know we have President Michael Miller here and Parker Poe Adams and Bernstein LLC, we have Michael Juve, Judy Juve to represent them, if you would come forward please and state your business and tell us what you're here for.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the commission taking time, the commissioners taking time tonight. On behalf of President Miller and the university, I want to thank you for this time. The university is refunding some existing debt that it has, some bonds that it has outstanding. And it has a small list of projects, a small new money component, but it is financing at its campuses here in Stanley County and in Mecklenburg County. And so under the tax code, we have an administrative provision that the jurisdictions in which the improvements are being made had, the governing bodies have to approve the financing and hold a public hearing. So that's what we've asked the county to do tonight. There's, as the resolution that we've provided, the draft resolution we provided for you makes clear, there's no financial responsibility for the county. The county's not obligated or responsible for the projects or the bonds in any way, this is really just a, a, an IRS requirement that we are moving through. So this morning, the bonds were approved by the issuer. A public hearing was held by the issuer and they were approved. Tomorrow night, we will ask the Mecklenburg County Commissioners to do the same thing that you're doing tonight. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, but that's, that's really all there is to it.
Does any board member have a question of Mr. Juve? I see no questions. At this time, we will hold a public hearing, I declare a public hearing open for Pfeiffer University TFRA hearing. I didn't know what TEFRA stands for, but I can't recall right now. Has something to do with taxes, I know. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this TEFRA, please come forward this time. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to it, please come forward. Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed and would reiterate that this is something they need to do by an elected body. And it does not obligate us to do anything except to pass the resolution. And we, we're happy to do that. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we adopt this resolution.
We have a motion by Commissioner Donovan, and second Commissioner Dennis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Congratulations, and I know you'll make it beautiful and do what you need to do. Thank you very much. The next agenda item is an award of contracts for the urgent repair program and we have with us Mr. Michael Keppley, I believe. No, we don't.
That is Michael.
Yes.
Good evening.
Get you confused with a short guy.
Michael Keppley, Carolina Governmental Services. We held a public bid opening on November 20th for the urgent repair grant, the single-family rehab program and the water connection programs. And I believe you have attached of an outline of the lowest most responsible bidders. And we are requesting that the contracts be awarded tonight for those houses that we have in front of us.
Would you state those bidders? Are these the ones that's on the...
Yes.
You have... How many?
We have six urgent repairs. One single-family rehab project and three bid packages for the water connection program.
I will note that those are going to, and I will quote these, Calvin Stedbury Construction, Combs &amp; Sons Builders, Kendall Trucking, Combs &amp; Sons, Kendall Trucking, Mobil Construction, Combs &amp; Sons, Dependable Plumbing, One of a Kind Plumbing and One of a Kind Plumbing. What's the pleasure of the board? Have a motion by Commissioner Dennis and second by Commissioner Ashudo. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, excuse me. Thank you. Please forgive me. Our next item on the agenda... Is appointments to the Board of Health and we have Mr. Dennis Joyner, Director.
Good evening, gentlemen. You have before you a memo that indicates that there are three Board of Health members whose terms expire December 31st of this year. Debbie Johnston, who serves as a general public member. Aretha Sherrill, who serves as a general public member. Dr. Laura Malden, who serves as the dentist member representative on the Board of Health. Debbie Johnston and Aretha Sherrill both were up for, or could have been appointed, reappointed, but they decided that they were not interested in continuing as, uh, as Board of Health members for various reasons. Dr. Laura Malden, her second term, she would be completing that this year. She can serve another term and she indicated a willingness to continue to serve on the board. The Board of Health discussed at their November 1st meeting possible, uh... Interested parties for the general public members. And reviewed and discussed those and the Board of Health wanted to... Obviously, it's your decision as to who the appointments are for this, for the Board of Health. But the Board of Health wanted to recommend Mr. Kenneth Knight and Ms. Joan Udi, or Dr. Joan Udi, as members for the general public members, replacing those, uh... Positions on the Board of Health.
Thank you, Dennis. You've heard the presentation. What's the pleasure of the board?
I nominate Mr. John Udi, uh... As a general public member. And Dr. Laura Malden, to reappoint her as a dentist member of the board. And knowing, uh, Shred A Louter as well as I do, and her service to Stanley County, I would like to nominate Shred A Louter as the other appointed member who belongs to the Board of Health.
Have a motion by Commissioner Morton to hear a second. Have a second by Commissioner Dennis. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. They will, as a unit.
So, can we have discussion still or do that...
We can still have discussion, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I'd like to, I like the recommendations by Dennis Joyner there and going on the...
Turn your mic on. I didn't have. I would press it again.
Anyway, I like the recommendations as made by Dennis Joyner. I think Kenneth Knight would bring a unique perspective to the, to the health board. I mean, he is, he is a biologist and he's worked in the Wildlife Commission and animal control falls underneath the, um, Health Department. And, you know, we've had that issue with the dog wardens and stuff, but I think he could bring a unique perspective to, you know, to the board. And I know we have possibly another opening up in January that might open up that we might be able to consider other, other nominees. I like the recommendations of the, the, um, from the Board of Health.
Any further discussion? Here none, we have a motion on the floor. Those in favor of the motion say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dennis. That was a four-one vote. Our next item of business is a presentation of the Central Atlanta Mobility Management Agency. Our presenter will be Jim Proser, Proser, Prosser? Come forward, Jim. Glad to have you tonight.
Thank you very much, Chairman and Commissioners. I am Jim Prosser with Central Atlanta Council of Governments. I'm, I'm here this evening to request approval of a resolution in support of an application for fifty-three-ten transit funds. The purpose of these funds is to address a opportunity, a challenge that is being faced by counties throughout our region, as well as some other voluntary agencies providing transportation to individuals, many elderly, but also those with special health needs. Those, those transportation needs are growing as our population is, is growing. And the, uh, the county agencies and others have asked us to see if we can coordinate an approach which accomplishes actually improving the effectiveness and efficiency at which we're providing those services in light of the fact that there is diminishing revenue that is being provided to assist with this. So, we have worked with the, with the county agencies and with other providers to develop an application. That application, again, is, uh, has been provided to you for, for your support. Two other quick important items. We're not asking for any money. And in the long term, we're going to be looking at getting foundations to help us fund this type of service. And finally, our focus here is really how do we make, how do we make these services better for the people in our, in our region? But also, how do we deliver these services in a more cost-effective fashion? And that's what we're working to accomplish. I'd be pleased to respond to any questions you may have.
Anyone have a question for Mr. Prosser? I will say that I know how difficult it is to, for our transportation, to, to meet all the needs now and I think this is a wonderful idea. And we have a resolution here. Would you like to have a signed resolution from us?
That'd be...
Can we do that?
That'd be wonderful.
Okay.
Much appreciated.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. What's the present, please, of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the Stanley County Board of Commissioners approve this resolution of support. And although it was not mentioned by Jim, we do know that our staff has been actively involved in that as well and, and know that it is a part of what not only the Commissioners are recommending, but the staff has put forward as well. So, I'll make that motion be approved.
Have a motion for Commissioner Donovan and second by Commissioner Dennis. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Five-o. Our next item of business is from our auditor. We have Ms. Erica Brown with Martin Starnes Associates to present the audit for us. Welcome.
Thank you.
And this will be a PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening. As you said, my name is Erica Brown and I'm here for Martin Starnes and Associates. And I wanted to take this time to thank you Commissioners for allowing us to be here to present to you your 2012 comprehensive annual financial report. I'm gonna talk mainly about your general fund, a little bit about your enterprise funds, and just give you an overview of the audit for fiscal year 2012. I'd also like to take this time to thank Toby and Melissa and all of the finance staff for their hard work and getting prepared for us and that makes our job a lot easier. So, I'd like to thank them for that. Now, on to some audit highlights. I would like to mention that we did issue an unqualified audit opinion, which is a clean opinion and the best opinion that you can get on your financial statements. And as I said, this is as of June 30th, 2012, and mainly your general fund. Your report has been submitted and approved by the local government commission. So, I'm not sure if you have your final copies yet, but you will get them shortly if you don't. Next, I'd like to take a minute just to explain the audit process. Sometimes there's some misconception that, you know, you only see us once or twice a year and we're in and out and that's all that we do. So, I just wanted to take a minute to explain that. We are, um, do much more than that. We work year-round with the finance department. We are always in constant contact with them, reading your board minutes monthly to see what's going on in your county. We're doing planning and risk assessment. The sooner do we finish up the audit, we, we go forward and begin the next year. I was just talking to Toby. It's just a, just that process, that cycle. We come in the interim time normally in the springtime and this is when we look at compliance with your federal and state grants and we also do some internal control testing. And then when we come back in the summertime, fall, this is when we do our financial statement audit and we actually tie your revenues and expenditures to backup documentation. This slide shows us a summary of the general fund revenues and expenditures for 2011 and 2012. And as you can see, about 1.5 million dollars, um, there's been an increase of about 1.5 million dollars in your revenues and about $700,000 decrease in your expenditures. And we'll look at this in more detail in the upcoming slides. That's just a big picture for you. Fund balance, I want to take a minute to talk about that. Fund balance serves as a measure of the county's financial resources available and there are five classifications of fund balance. There's non-spendable fund balance, which is not in cash form and that would be things such as pre-pays or inventories. Then you have restricted fund balance and these are items that are restricted externally, such as laws or grantors and state statute. Then you have committed and assigned and committed and assigned are very similar, except that assigned is at a lower level. Committed is at the highest constraint, which is at the board. It does not expire and it requires a board action to undo. And then what is left over is your unassigned, which has no external or internal constraints. And we'll discuss this in more details while coming up. Another term for fund balance is available fund balance. A lot of times you will hear this terminology from the local government commission. And the local government commission defines available fund balance by taking your total fund balance, less your non-spendable, which would be your inventory or pre-pays, unless your state stabilization by state statute, which is by state law and this gives you your available fund balance. And this calculation is utilized as a basis for comparing you to other units and calculating your fund balance percentage. And we will look at that on the next, um, slide. This slide shows us your available fund balance calculation for 2012. Your available fund balance was 9.9 million, whereas for 2011, it was 8.5 million. So, that increased a little over 1.3 million dollars and that was mainly due to, um, an increase in revenue and decrease in expenditures. And also, your stabilization by, by state statute decreased, which caused this number to increase. And we will look at that calculation in just a second. This slide shows you your fund balance over the past three years for your general fund. And as you can see, revenue exceeded expenditures by about 2.2 million dollars. There was an increase in general fund fund balance primarily due to having both an overall increase in revenues and a decrease in expenditures over the prior year. The top three departments in the general fund that had the most expenditures, we'll look at those in the upcoming slide. And I stuttered there for a minute 'cause I had a note that it was 2.2 million, but as you can see, it's just 1.9 million. This slide shows you your general fund stabilization by state statute, which we talked about a few slides ago. A lot of information here, but it just shows you how that is calculated and compares that state statute number to 2011 to 2012. So, in 2012, it was 7.9 million and 2011, it was 7.3. Back to talking about available fund balance. Available fund balance as a percentage of general fund expenditures and transfers to other funds for 2012 was 19% and 2011 was 16%. So, this increased about 3% over the prior year. And the LGC, Local Government Commission, recommends a minimum of, um, 8%. So, you're well over that recommended minimum there. Now, we're gonna switch gears a little bit and look at your top three revenues for your general fund. Your top three revenues were your avalorm taxes, sales and services, and restricted intergovernmental. All those together represent 84% of your total revenues for the county. And I would like to mention that we briefly looked at the North Carolina Department of State Treasurer Financial Information for your county and compared that to a per capita group average. And if you were to look at that group's average, it is very similar to the county's. A lot of times we get that question. Now, we're gonna look briefly at those top three revenues. The avalorm taxes stayed consistent with the prior year, decreased a little under 1% or $240,000. Restricted intergovernmental revenues, which these are your federal and state grants, those increased from the prior year about 8% or around $780,000 and this was due to an increase in state and federal grants. There was a $620,000 Department of Commerce grant for economic development incentive and there was also a $300,000 Rural Center grant, also for economic development. Sales and services increased about 10% or around $670,000 and this was due to an increase of ambulance fees of $580,000 and health fees of $300,000. Those ambulance fees increased due to increased calls, quicker billing and insurance reimbursements. And the patient visits increased about 20%. Now, moving on to your expenditures for your general fund. Your top three expenditures were public safety at 22%, human services at 28%, and education at 24%. And those main top three expenditures together represent 74% of the total general fund expenditures. First, looking at human services, which represents 28%. This stayed consistent with the prior year, increasing about 2% or $300,000. Education decreased about 5% around $690,000 and this was due to a decrease of expenditures to Stanley County Public Schools. I'd like to mention that this was due to a decrease in lottery funds, which led to a decrease in spending, which, and these funds are typically used for debt service. Public safety stayed consistent with the prior year, decreasing about $170,000 or 1%. Now, I'd like to look briefly at your enterprise funds. I wanted to note here that the operating expenses that are listed on here includes depreciation expense. And so, a lot of times you may be used to seeing depreciation expense is the full accrual and you may be used to looking at the modified accrual. So, I'd like to mention if we were to back out depreciation and not take that into effect here, the Baden operating income would be $124,000 and the Piney, Piney Point Water District operating income would be $14,000. So, that, um, just puts that depreciation a little bit in perspective. And if you wanna look at this in more detail, if you look on page 22 of your report or exhibit I, once you have it, that will give you some more detailed information on these funds and the cash flow of those funds. And this slide shows us your utility fund and airport... And this slide shows us your utility fund and airport fund, and again, if we took the effect of depreciation out of the operating expenses, your operating income for the utility fund would be $58,000, and for the airport fund would be, I'm sorry, a negative $58,000, and for the airport would be a negative $316,000. Cash flow from operation increased here because of the activity in the project fund for your utility fund. And I know that was a lot of information, I'd just like to guide you to look at the management discussion and analysis, which you'll find on page three of your audit report. And this is just a great place to look to get an overview of what has happened in the current year, why revenues or expenses increased or decreased, and also look forward to the fiscal year 13 budget year. So with that said, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any board members have any questions or comments?
Commissioner McIntyre, I'd like to make a comment, first of all, I think Erica's very, very good report. I think lots of times though, we hear these numbers and we're not necessarily seeing what's behind it. And I would like to thank my fellow commissioners, including Commissioner Lauder who served during this time, for being conservative and putting us in this position. What you just told us is that we're in a better financial position than we were the year before as far as fund balance is concerned.
Correct.
And that happens, I think, because first of all Commissioners make good decisions. Secondly, I would like to thank our manager and Toby Henson, our finance director, for the work that they do, and your staff Toby, because you help us. What she told us was that we had reduced expenses during the year, and that was important, and I know that happens because of the policies that we passed, but also because of the practices that are put in place. I'd also like to make one small correction, at least in my opinion, I could be wrong about this, but our education expenditures did not go down as reported in this slideshow. And because we also had to spend some more money for capital expenses, so there was some debt service that was involved. And I want to give credit to the Commissioners for the fact that we did not reduce total education spending, even though you're accurate in how it's being portrayed in your, in your presentation here. So, Mr. Chairman, I was just wanting to say that so that people could understand a little bit more behind the numbers there, and I think that, again, county Commissioners are doing an excellent job in putting the county in a good position. Hopefully as the economic downturn releases a little bit, we'll be in a great position to move forward.
Thank Commissioner Donovan, and I can only reiterate those things, and one other thing with education, the enrollment went down some and was part of that. Anyone else? I also want to thank Erica and the Martin Starnes for the work they do, and Toby, your staff just does a great job, and our county manager and clerk, and we're just proud of them, they do a good job, thank you so much. At this time, what's the pleasure of the board to accept or reject the audit? Motion Commissioner Dennis to accept, to have a second. Second by Commissioner Morton, any discussion? All in favor say aye, the ayes have it, those opposed say no, ayes have it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is a presentation by Ruben Crumey with North Carolina DOT, talking about the Albemarle-Baden New London Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Welcome. Before you start, let me also say that it doesn't say this on our agendas, but we do have a public hearing for this that we will hold.
Yes, sir. Thank you Chairman, county Commissioners. Yes, I am Ruben Crumey with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and I am presenting to you the Albemarle-Baden New London CTP. I would like to start with the Comprehensive Transportation Plan with the adoption sheet and work my way through my presentation. The adoption sheet actually shows the adoption through the county and the three urban areas, and endorsed by the Rocket River RPO and the Transportation Planning Branch. And this Comprehensive Transportation Plan will be the official document over the Albemarle Thoroughfare Plan. The highway map that I'm showing before you shows the recommendations for the area. The first major recommendation is referred to as the Northern Loop. The Northern Loop starts from .3 miles east of Newt Road and continues on into US 52, and then comes back through the Northeast Connector, going through a portion of Leighton Road, and then down Sweet Home Church Road into NC 2427. The second major recommendation is the NC 2427, considered the bypass or Southern Loop, which starts at that same point east of, .3 miles east of Newt Road, going through South Side Road, through US 52, through old US 52, into NC 2427, NC 73, into Sweet Home Church Road. US 52 from the northern planning area boundary all the way through to the southern planning area boundary. It's recommended to be a boulevard, four lanes divided.
Does that mean they're taking out the turn lane if it's a four lane, because they already have five lanes on part of that 52 project?
On US 52, yes, there will be turning lanes to turn at the existing intersections.
Right.
Yes.
But they will take those, that fifth, that center lane out?
Yes, sir.
Would that be a median or?
Yes. Okay. East of NC 740 and East Main Street, there's a recommendation for NC 2427-73 to Sweet Home Road, Sweet Home Church Road. It exists as a three lane, recommended as another major thoroughfare for five lanes. And then east of Sweet Home Church Road, NC's 2427-73, it's recommended as an expressway all the way to the planning area boundary. The Northeast Connector Extension at NC 740 is extended into Bernard Road, and that extension is a new location connecting to Bernard Road into NC 2427-73. And that is shown as a minor in the plan. The Snug Street Extension into Pennington Road. And there's one more major. The Austin Road, Lauder Road Connector. Following the cursor. Okay, and the next recommendations for the plan are minor widening improvements. NC 740, all of these roadways that I'm getting ready to name are widened to 12-foot length, standard 12-foot lanes. And that is NC 740 from Baden to Impala Drive in Albemarle, NC 73, NC 8, of course Bernard Street, Clover Fork Circle, Holt Road, Indian Mound Road, and Lauder Road. I actually should have put the inset, I'm sorry about that. But for the public transportation and rail map, we have a recommendation for a circulatory route for bus, and the route actually goes through the roadways of NC 2427-73 and Henson Street, US 52 and Snug Street, NC 740 and Falls Road in Baden, and US 52 and Danville Road in New London. That's actually the four park and ride lots recommended within the area, okay? The actual bus route, excuse me, which is a fixed bus route, is recommended within the downtown and urban area of Albemarle, utilizing US 52, NC 2427-73, East and West Main Streets, and Second Street. The bicycle route. Recommendations are for the existing bicycle routes throughout the planning area, and the recommendations are for needs improvement along those routes to add bicycling usage. And the other maps are just inserts into the Baden area and Albemarle, the enlargement. And I guess the last map is the pedestrian map. And the pedestrian map includes inserts for the Albemarle and Baden area. The recommendations came from the 2007 Albemarle Comprehensive Pedestrian Plan, and the 2008 Baden Pedestrian Plan, and the 2011 New London, Richfield, and Meisenheimer Pedestrian Sidewalk Recommendation. These are basically the recommendations within the Albemarle-Baden-New London Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And we're presenting these recommendations for adoption through Stanley County.
Thank you, does any board member have a question, Mr. Crumey? Hear none, I now declare public hearing open. Anyone wishing to come forth and speak in favor of this proposal, please come forward. Anyone wishing to come forward to speak in opposition to this proposal? Hear none, I declare the public hearing closed, and what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Yes.
I know we've got the Mayor Baden here tonight. In these discussions that have been held, is there any move to try to get improved access to the Baden Business Park? Last year about this time, we had a proposal in front of us that might improve, or might... Last year about this time, we had a proposal that would have necessitated about 50 tractor-trailer trucks a day. And my question is, how are, are we providing any proposals that might improve access to the Baden Business Park? Or in the conversations that maybe the Baden has been participating in this, has there been anything that we need to be looking at or need to do differently, Mayor?
Other than widening your 740 to 12 feet? We've always had plenty of access, even when we had the eight-foot width. So I don't see a problem with it.
Okay, I just don't want us to miss an opportunity to at least, you know, pay attention to that, and I think that I, we've mentioned that even beforehand, but I want to make sure that that was brought up.
Anyone else? What's the pleasure of the board? I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Commissioner Dennis to approve, to have a second. Second by Commissioner Shudo, any further discussion? I'd like to thank the DOT and the town of Baden, New London, and Richfield, I mean Albemarle, for the hard work they've done on this, and so this will be completed in the next couple of weeks, is that right? We thank you for your hard work. All in favor of the motion, please say aye, those opposed, no, and the ayes have it, five oh. Thank you again. I'm getting there Danny. Our next presentation is with Ms. Dana Stojanki with the Rocket River RPO, talking about section of Highway 2427 becoming a boulevard or expressway, I think.
Thank you all for hearing this presentation tonight, I was asked by the county manager to provide some information. And again, it's about, again, I'm Dana Stojanki, Rocket River RPO, Strategic Highway Corridor Revision Process is what I'll be discussing tonight. And so Strategic Highway Corridor, our North Carolina Department of Transportation has created a system throughout the state of important roadways, and this is the map that was adopted in 2008 showing those important corridors. Here is a blow-up of our region, Division 10, and you can see in Stanley County, which is up here, that there is a red line on 52, which indicates a boulevard, 2427 is in green, which indicates an expressway, 49 is an expressway, and then down here, and you've got a freeway down through Anson County and Union County on 74. And so these are the designations that the Board of Transportation has issued in 2008 for across the state, and so each part of the state has these specific designations. What is the revision process? Basically, it has to come through the RPO to have, if a town within the RPO wants to do this revision process, it's not an easy process because you're trying to change a line on the map through the board. NC DOT is updating the North Carolina Multimodal Investment Network, which is Strategic Highway Corridor map is included in that. And it's supposed to have started in the fall, I'm not quite sure if it's actually kicked off yet, 18-month process, and it could be a good time to do this if the communities want to do this, but you can really apply it anytime. Again, it's sort of an uphill battle, but it has been done. So the reason I'm telling you all this information is because we have a draft Strategic Highway Corridor Modification Map that includes the town of, the city of Locust and the town of Red Cross, and Locust is in green, I'm not sure if it looks green, yeah, green on your screens. Orange is the town of Red Cross, you see a star here, the red, and then a star at the county line. That is the portion that the communities are interested in perhaps doing a modification of the Strategic Highway Corridor. The gray section here, here, and here is county jurisdiction, so you've got several pieces, actually the north side here, so you've got several pieces that are within the county. This all stems from the Comprehensive Transportation Plan for Stanley County. The city of Locust, the town of Red Cross decided not to adopt the Stanley County CTP that we did last year, or about 18 months ago or so. And so the big sticking point was this designation of expressway through their community, and they wanted a boulevard designation. And so they felt that the next logical step was to do this modification process. And I just want to talk to you a little bit about why, what the difference of these roads are. Expressway is a much higher mobility road, posted speed limits are 45 to 60, we've got minimum of four lanes, and it's, you know, basically access control, no lights, right in, right out. It's gonna be a higher facility than what is currently there. This is a graphic, a picture of it, and you can see, you know, you want to have driveways that are together, you're not gonna have any lights, you're gonna have the local roads separated from the expressway, so it's an intensive use. And it's for the purpose of moving goods and, um, goods, um, through, through the system. Boulevard is, um, a lesser designation. It's got medium speeds, medium volumes, thirty to fifty-five mile an hour posted speed limits. And the access control is less. You're not going to have as much, um, you're going to have lights. Um, you're going to have, um, full, um, full intersections in terms of mobility. But you will still have, um, some right in, right outs and, um, combine them with some leftovers. And I'll show you a picture of those. So you see you've got some lights. You see local, um, local roads are, um, a part of, um, the, the boulevard system. And finally, we've got major thoroughfare, which is basically what Locust is right now. Locust is, you've got a, um, four-lane cross-section. You've got a turn lane in the middle. You've got full movement. Um, and that's what the current, um, configuration of Locust is. Now, Red Cross is different. Red Cross is basically designed as an expressway, but it has some lights. I mean, it has some full movement in terms of its, um, local roads. Um, so here's a picture of that local thoroughfare. This sort of, you know, it could be Red Cross, but it's, it's not. But that's sort of the configuration. So, um, I guess the bottom line is the, um, Rocky River RPO tabled this discussion. They, it came to us, I guess, back in September. The RPO TAC discussed it. They told Locust and Red Cross if they wanted to pursue this, then they needed to, you know, give resolutions to that effect. Um, both towns did do that. Um, at our November meeting, they still, um, the, the board, the TAC decided to table it. Um, Lindsey wasn't able, I'm sorry, Commissioner Donovan was not able to attend. But he did ask if they could table it so that it could be further discussion, um, at this meeting as well as some of the other jurisdictions want to discuss it. Um, we are right now actually talking to both Locust and Red Cross about updating their CTP because updating their CTP, their Comprehensive Transportation Plan and perhaps looking at other facilities, um, that could, they wouldn't have to go through this process to get what they want. They could do it at a more local level and work with the planners to try to make things work. So, um, that's sort of where we are right now. And I'd be happy to, um, answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dana. Anybody have a question from Dana?
Um, would you be willing to put the, uh, can you put the Strategic Highway Corridor Modification Map back up?
Sure. This, what's that one? That map?
I don't see it on my screen, but it's the one that's got Locust in green and...
Mm-hmm. I just flipped to it. I don't...
So, um, just trying to make sure that we are clear as to what is, is happening here. We do know that the, the, the towns or the designation for this highway is expressway.
Correct.
And Locust is asking for it to be a boulevard. And then Red Cross is also asking for it to be a boulevard.
Correct.
Um, what you're saying is that it's really at its highest, um, standard right now as an expressway. And it's kind of steps down to be a boulevard in that there's more interconnectivity or more driveways and things of that nature. Is that correct?
Correct. It's, the boulevard designation is higher than what Locust currently has. Because Locust currently has that, um, major thoroughfare, um, treatment. So, and Red Cross, I mean, they, they could, I guess, technically be a boulevard right now because they do have the lights. And, you know, there wouldn't be much change, um, for Red Cross.
Okay. And you're also suggesting that, um, should the designation be, if you will, lowered from one to another? That can be done in, in the pa, in the future, but it's more difficult to step it back up to where it's more, having more transportation flow through. Is, is that an accurate statement?
I'm, I'm not sure if I understand the question. I apologize.
It would be more difficult to go from boulevard to expressway than going from expressway to a boulevard in the future.
I don't know if I can answer that.
I think what he's saying is if it, if it, if we changed, if you changed it to a boulevard from, uh, all through Red Cross to the county line and then Red Cross and then it wanted to, somebody wanted to change it back to expressway, that would be more difficult to do.
I, I don't, I can't, I don't think I could answer that question. Um, I mean, really, the, the thing that answers the question is traffic counts. I mean, if you get to a point where there's, you, there's no functionality in the road, then you've got to do something. So it's really dictated by those traffic counts. As transportation planners, we try to predict those things and, and you do our demographics, but, um...
One, one of the things I'm trying to do, Dana, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, it's fine.
One of the things that, that, the reason that I asked for it to be tabled at the RPO was that I wanted input from commissioners. Um, and I want to make sure that as the representative there, that I'm expressing their wishes. Um, it, I'm of the opinion that we, we've got a four-lane highway for the first time in our history. And it's important, I think, for the total county to have traffic move, traffic, uh, goods and services move along that way in the most unimpeded way possible. And I know that when the highway was first built through Locust, um, that became a little more difficult because of the connectivity of streets and so forth. And so, in, in my personal opinion, it may be more difficult to go to an expressway there. You know, the horse is out of the barn. Uh, I think we already have proposals, maybe some of a southern bypass that around Locust in the future. So that may need to be a designated boulevard. Um, love to hear your opinions on that. But to me, we, when the highway leaves the eastern side of Locust, it seems to me to be in our best interest at this point in time to maintain that as an expressway. If, if we don't do that, it seems like that we're impeding access to everything to the east. Uh, and we're getting into a situation where we're being more like a Highway seventy-four through Monroe or Highway seventy-four through, uh, through Shelby. You had seen on an earlier map that Dana provided that there is a statewide, um, uh, corridor, a, a vision plan. And we only have really two roads that go through our county. Forty-nine goes across the top end. But in, it seems like to me that we need to maintain, um, as much of a, a flow of goods and services as we can. So, uh, it, you know, I'd be interested in what you guys want us to do at the next RPO. I will, we'll be considering whether this designation will be backed by the RPO. And we have a vote there. But I'd certainly like to know and hear from fellow commissioners what it is that you think that we should be doing.
Could I make a comment that, just so everyone understands the process? Um, the RPO, we don't make the decision. We just forward it on to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. So just to the board. So I just want to clarify that.
Uh, if it remains expressway, while we have stoplights, they will remain the stoplights that are on the...
That's what I'm...
Someone answer that question?
NC DOT answer that.
Um, my name is Jamal. I live here with the Department of Transportation. Um, expressway is, um, we are trying not to have any traffic lights. Uh, basically, the traffic goes without any impudence. And, um, uh, we, we have, uh, uh, right in, right out. And we have like a red light flashing, red, red light at the intersecting and the flashing yellow light in the main road. So that's really to the extent of the traffic lights. Most of the, uh, intersections are treated with interchanges or if they're lower volume, uh, at, at grade intersections with, uh, right in, right outs.
So is it my understanding that twenty-four, twenty-seven through Red Cross and Locust now is an expressway?
Well, the current treatment of the, uh, twenty-four, twenty-seven through Red Cross is probably boulevard right now because we have a couple of traffic lights. So we, if we are truly, uh, expressway, we are not supposed to have, uh, traffic lights. But there are exceptions sometimes, you know, in, in the things. But regarding the Locust, um, we have talked to them today. And we may be able to help with the situation by proposing a southern or northern bypass of Locust and Red Cross. Because once we have the bypass designated as, um, ex, expressway, we don't really have to alter with the existing facility. The same thing we are doing with Albemarle right now.
And when is, when would that show up on a TIP?
Oh, as far as the, uh, funding?
Yeah.
Well, that, that's a different story.
Okay. And I, I think that, that, that kind of, you know, um, s, maybe suggests or, um, supports what I'm saying. I just don't want us to make, uh, a decision because we are talking about maybe decades out. And we know that funding is going to be more and more difficult. I want us to make sure that we, we represent because we've got, we've got great assets on the eastern part of our county. Um, and we don't, and, and even north and, north and south, that we don't want to preclude. We don't want to cut those off by making some decisions that might allow a lot of driveway cuts. Tony, you've been on DOT. You know about this and you know how that they've talked about. Trying to make sure that we move traffic. Even the way, even the design of the road in Locust now is to encourage and move traffic. Same thing on the Northeast Connector where we put in the roundabouts. That's all, that's what we're trying to do. So I, I'm just asking for some, some help and some guidance.
I have a question.
Yes.
Bethel Church Road is going to stop. If it's an expressway, would that stoplight be removed?
Well, like I said, the true, uh, meaning of expressway is supposed to be without any traffic lights. So, once we are talking about expressway, um, the designation, this is the ultimate vision for the corridor. Uh, we have to look at it, once, once we are building the facility as an expressway or transforming it into, we have to look at whether they, we could install an interchange, uh, build an interchange there or how can we remove the, um, intersection without, with the traffic?
I travel that road every day between my house and Andy at Locust. And there's three stoplights within a mile of each other. One at Western School, one at Red, one at two oh five, and then one at Bethel Church Road. One at Bethel Church Road, anybody driving out. It doesn't take more than one car to trigger that thing. And traffic would be just flying down the road all of a sudden. Stop because one car comes out on Bethel Church Road or out of a subdivision across the street.
Well, that was supposed to be a super street intersection. And we got a lot of, you know, what raised. I was on board at that time.
That's right.
And we broke down and let them have a stoplight, which I still was not in favor of. That should still be a super street.
That's right.
That will move traffic and I'd like to see that go back to that someday. I know they say they got the school buses and all that. But the school bus is a whole lot safer making that right turn than it is crossing because that's a blind stoplight. If you're coming over that hill, it's still a bad intersection.
Yes, sir. I agree.
Uh, we got to remember that we build these roads to move traffic. We don't build it to put all these cuts in it and stop it up again. We've defeated our purpose. I think we need to let this road alone. And if we need to do something in these towns, look at a bypass around them. We've been working, I worked with Locust, tried to tell them, and Barry and I did both. Where do they need to go with that bypass? They got a perfect place to go with.
That's right.
They need to buy just a little section of land in there. Made the offer to them when I was on the board and, you know, we'll start doing these intersections. Go ahead, update them piece at the time. So when we get it connected, you'll have it. And, uh, good luck. They need to remind, they need to remind them. We tried to do that six or seven years ago. And here they are still now planning it, so...
They, they have...
I think we need to let this road alone. We need to get it, we don't need to be in the highway planning business. That's their job. We need to make recommendations. We see a problem. But trying to rename it from expressway, that, we need to let that to traffic count and the people that does the business. And I just think we're doing the wrong thing getting involved in that, so... That's my opinion.
Well, I have an opinion on that too. Working in Locust, it is impossible to get out of some of those streets on the twenty-four, twenty-seven because of the traffic, especially in the afternoon when there's Charlotte crowds coming in through Locust. I really feel like that, um, I don't really, running from the east side of Red Cross in that area, I cannot see changing that before to a boulevard, part of us a boulevard anyway. But as far as Locust is concerned, I would support at the present time, making it a boulevard.
Anyone else?
And Mr. Chairman, we're not taking any action tonight, right? We're just getting information and it's information that you're going to ask me to take to the next RPO meeting. And I think what I'm hearing is that the horse may be out of the barn in Locust. We need to make sure that we have access to, to, to the highway and, and, and let, let the planners continue to work there. So if they wanted to change that to a boulevard, upgrade it actually to a boulevard, that would be great. But we would like to see everything east of Locust at this time stay an expressway. And that's what I'm hearing from the, my fellow board members.
Let me ask one other question then. Uh, am I not correct that inside the city limits, that they have a lot of control of what that road does inside that city limits, don't they? The town itself? I mean, changing it to boulevard, they still have control whether it's a boulevard, expressway. They got a lot of influence of what we do, what the state does to that road. So, but changing the name, it's still a horse. You can call it whatever you want to. It may be, you may want to call it an elephant, but it's still a horse. I mean, we can make all the recommendations, change all the names you want to. It's still up to the town and the state to do it. I mean, I mean, they got control of it now, so I don't see what the change of name does.
And one other thing I'd like to add is, um, the twenty-four, twenty-seven, uh, basically, uh, it serves a higher purpose. We're, we're serving from the coast to Charlotte and beyond. So this is one of the major facilities that, uh, basically, uh, we have to preserve and ma, maintain and also, uh, help that it would be a traffic mover, not, not a land server. So that's why we are recommending a bypass for Locust and, uh, Red Cross. That way their, their town and the road that goes through their town, we don't have to do much with it. We could do as they please.
One other question. Who makes the decision to install a stoplight, the state or the city?
To install the stopli, uh, install a stoplight? At this time, basically, it's a decision based on the traffic volume. And they, you know, um, they, they do some kind of survey as far as the accident rates and all of that. Once the traffic exceed a certain amount, they would install a traffic light based on, you know, the information there and analysis. But, uh, it's basically done by the division office. So you can talk to your division engineer and they will give you more information.
Is it my understanding that two of the major differences in an, an expressway and a boulevard is the speed limit and stoplights in some of the intersections?
Land access.
But those are two major things. So a boulevard would, could be a lower speed limit. Any more questions?
I'd just like to say one other, I appreciate the comments, appreciate the input because I, I would definitely want to represent the board well. I think this, um, uh, this whole discussion helps us understand and helps the public figure if they're watching, understand how much goes into, into this type of planning. Uh, I know when Ruben's up there talking about all that's going on with that Conferensive Transplant, Transportation Plan, you feel like you're drinking water from a fire hose. And this is what goes on at the RPO meetings. And so the people need to understand that, that we do have representation there. We are trying to make sure that we're making good plans. And these plans are not something that, as you were kidding around, doesn't happen tomorrow. It may be, it may be fifteen, twenty years before it happens. Same thing with our water and sewer and other things that we're considering throughout our county. These are things that have to be talked about and well-understood and, and we need to make good plans. So I just want to say thanks for the input from everybody.
Do we need to take any action on this or is it clear to the board that, uh, Lindsey will represent us?
I think we're good. No action. Thank you. Next item of business, presentation by County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item in your agenda is to select a voting delegate for the two thousand and thirteen North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals Conference, which will be held January twenty-fourth and Friday, January twenty-fifth in Raleigh. You all remember you put together your goals and submitted those. And staff has subsequently sent you via email. Um, it's probably been a month or so ago, um, some information on what those goals looked like. But the, those have gone through different planning committees and different re, iterations. And so they're now ready for, uh, formal board adoption. And then that's how they'll set their priorities for, uh, their lobbying efforts during the, um, thirteen, fourteen biennium. And so, um, if you have questions, uh, certainly answer those. But, um, the, just looking, uh, the association's requesting a, a voting delegate from Stanley County.
I will open the floor for anyone who would like to volunteer. I will do it. Uh, I had planned to do that if it was okay with the board. I would, uh, Peter, if, uh, in this, it states that they would like to have new commissioners come to this. It does take a Thursday and a Friday all day. It starts at like seven-thirty on Thursday morning.
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going new bird in the following week. That's why.
Okay. Just wanted to make that.
Yeah, I'm going.
Okay.
Thank you though. Yeah, it's just two, two weeks in a row.
If it's okay with the board, I would plan to do that. Could I have a suggestion for an alternate? Who would like to be an alternate for that? Entertain a motion for, uh, to appoint me as the delegate. And I have a motion by Commissioner Shudo. Have a second. I have a Commissioner Dennis. Now could I have a motion for an alternate? And I think Mr. Donovan said he would do that. Do I need a motion for that? Someone make a motion for Commissioner Donovan? Motion for Commissioner Donovan to be the alternate by Commissioner Dennis to have a second. Second by Commissioner Morton. All in favor, say aye. If there was no, there was no discussion. Next agenda item is about code of ethics and will be presented by County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, back in, uh, two thousand and ten, the, uh, North Carolina General Assembly, um, made a, um, a general statute that required a, the board to adopt a code of ethics. And you all did that two years ago. Um, and we felt like with the new board coming... We felt like with the new board coming on and the new swearing-in, that it would be good to reaffirm that Code of Ethics, and so that's what you have before you this evening, consistent with one sixty-eight dash eighty-six, the Code of Ethics to be reaffirmed, reaffirmed by the new board for the coming year. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Anyone have a question? I have one. Oh, it's stated somewhere in there about a class, a two-hour class. Can you, do you know when that would be provided? Sometimes they do that where several people can come to one location. Do you have any idea?
We can actually, there's several ways to do that. I know Peter will get it actually when he goes to new commissioner's school in New Bern. The other individual that will need to get that will be Tony, and you have a year to do it. It'll be offered at the association's annual conference, wherever that, wherever that's held this year. We also can download that from online through the school of government, and multiple people can watch it, and so there's, you know, if you, if we can't get it through travel or training opportunities that are outside of Stanley County, we can always go on the school government website, pull down that webinar, and, and you all can watch it at your, at your leisure and get credit for, for that.
I think that's what we did before was the webinar. Okay, all right. That was my question. Oh, what's the, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the Code of Ethics as of December third, two thousand and twelve.
Motion by Commissioner Donovan to adopt, seconded by Commissioner Dennis. Has everyone read the Code of Ethics? All right. Any discussion? Those who favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, five oh. Our next item of business is the consent agenda, and on the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the regular meeting for November nineteenth from Finance, and approval of a budget amendment, approval of budget amendment for IT, and approval of a budget amendment for senior services, and approval of budget amendment for health department. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by which Commissioner Dennis to accept, have a second. Second by Commissioner Morton. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The ayes have it, five oh. Thank you. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to... I'm so sorry, I got the wrong page. At this time, the commissioners will entertain anyone who wishes to come forward to speak to the commissioners about anything you have on your mind. The ask is you state your name and where you're from, and limit your comments to three minutes, if you would, please. Seeing no one, at this time, I'll ask if there is, I won't ask individual commissioners, but I'll ask any commissioner wishes to make a comment. Commissioner Shudo?
Yes, I'd like to just, I'm excited to be here, and I look forward to work with, with the board for, over the next four years. Couple of things, I'd like to, of course, I'm excited about starting a workday. I think I told you all, I want to do like one workday a month where I go to different, different departments throughout the county just to see how our taxpayer dollars are spent, and just get a better of an understanding of how things are worked. And also, the other thing I'd like to see is a couple of things with, with the Alcoa issue. I like the goals of just trying to clarify some stuff and see what we can do to move forward to, to move forward, like a couple of things. I figure there's, and maybe I'm wrong here, but there were like just three, you know, out in the public, there seems to be three scenarios with the Alcoa situation. One is the county supporting the state's Twenty-First Century Plan, and that was like the recapture of the dams. You have to, I don't know if there was ever a public vote taken on that, and I know we just redesigned our website, and if there's, never been a vote on that to, to go for the recapturing of the dams, we should maybe keep that information off the new, the new website. Secondly, there's a, things show up by citizens in the, in the newspaper that there's a proposal out there from things called Athlet, how do you pronounce that? Athlegas? Altigas? Altigas? And, you know, just try to set, let the, the public know, is there really an offer out there, and if there is, what's, what's the county doing with it? And the third, the third clip, the third scenario is that we work on a settlement with Alcoa. And, you know, I've, I met with Alcoa folks this afternoon, and I have a proposal here that expires at midnight tonight, that hopefully we could have some time to have some discussion on it to try to, to help move the process forward. And that's all.
At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session, to recess this meeting, go into closed session to discuss an economic development matter in accordance with GS one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, parentheses, A, parentheses, four. Also to discuss a real estate matter in accordance with GS one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, parentheses, A, parentheses, five. And the third item would be to discuss a personnel matter in accordance with GS one forty-three dash three eighteen dot eleven, parentheses, A, parentheses, six. Motion by Commissioner Donovan, seconded by Commissioner Dennis. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just got a, got a question here. Yeah, I'd asked Andy Lucas about maybe having access to minutes from previous closed sessions, and I believe Andy said if, for me to look at it, there has to be a vote or something.
That's correct, and that'll at current closed session, so that, that, that can be part of the closed session discussion, for you to ask the board similar to approving the minutes in there.
Okay, we can get that done in closed session. So we have a motion, and did I have a second? Second by Dennis. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, we are recessed.